I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is Thursday, January twenty fifth at six o'clock. A meeting of regular council. Be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda for the meeting be adopted and circulated. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Shetty moves, can I second her?
I'll second it.
Councilor Paxton seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Okay, we're down now to seven point one. Be it resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of counsel held on January ninth, twenty twenty four be approved. Could I have a second or please?
I'll move it to the chairman.
Councilor Paxton moves, can I have a second? Councilor Campbell seconds it. Any questions, comments?
Well, the minutes don't reflect your presentation because you did a presentation that day too. I don't know if they can because it wasn't on the agenda. So I guess we'll just leave it the way it is.
Okay. Any other comments? None, okay. Can I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Next item is seven point two. Minutes from January eleventh. Be it resolved that the minutes of regular meeting of council held on January eleventh be approved. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Shetty moves, can I have a second or please?
I'll second it.
Councilor Paxton seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, can I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carried. Okay, so now that takes us down to number ten. Accounts received as information. And of payments, payment registry, does anyone have any?
I do.
Okay, Councilor Kleiber?
So, um, on page one of the, there's only one page there, but I just want to know if our CEO can look into this. We've got the December newsletter for Sandra Barnes for five hundred and twenty-five, then we have Donna Maxwell with twenty-two hundred and fifty-seven. Then we have premier printing for twenty-four hundred dollars. Then there's, on the visa, there's postage of six hundred and seventy-two dollars. And then I was wondering what this big and colorful interlaid graphic is. That's a printer too, isn't it?
This is a Selkirk record.
That's the Selkirk record. So what did we do in the Selkirk record for two thousand dollars? Do we have some, uh?
Job postings.
Ad, ads in there? There must have been for the different, um, planning items? Like advertising for the planning items?
Yeah, there'd be planning items, um, uh, job postings, I think, uh, and then there would be, um, um, yeah, that, I guess that'd be, uh, the majority of them. We could take a look and give you a listing if you want.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's, um, this is a bigger bill than normal, but, you know, we might, we, we did a bunch of stuff, so that's, you know. Can let me know what's all in there, that's okay, and I'm not worried about it, but I am looking at the newsletter price and, you know, when you add it all up, you know, you're already at almost like six thousand dollars for a newsletter. Uh, fifty-eight, sixty-eight, I think I added it up to. Um, and we're doing four per year? So it's almost like twenty thousand dollars.
Six.
Six a year.
Six a year, at fi- at, at six thousand dollars, that's thirty-six thousand dollars for newsletters. I don't know, maybe in the budget, we should look at this again and just see whether or not we would need to do six newsletters? Do they need to be fifteen pages or whatever, how many pages they are? I know that we're kind of trying to fill them now, like we're asking for subjects to fill them, so maybe we should look at that. Do four instead of six.
Councilor Shetty?
But is Donna Maxwell, she's not all just for the newsletter, right? She does all other stuff too?
She does other things, yes.
Yes, she did for email blogs, I think. That's still. That's still pretty healthy. Well, we should look at it anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at it and just see, we don't want to spend that much money on newsletters. I mean, they're good, but.
Any other questions on manual payments? Hearing none, okay. Uh, November visa report? Hearing none, okay. That takes us down to number eleven. Oh, fifteen. Fifteen point one, appointment of the Noxious Reed's officer, inspector, Noxious Reed inspector. Be it resolved that the council of the rural municipality of West Saint Paul appoint Terry Ferguson as the municipal Noxious Reed inspector. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move.
Councilor Shetty moves, can I have a second or please?
I'll second.
Councilor Campbell seconds. Any questions, comments on this? Hearing none, can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carried. Next is fifteen two, reappointment of fire department membership. Be it resolved that the council of rural municipality of West Saint Paul reappoint the following members to the West Saint Paul Fire Department. Could I have a mover, please?
So move it to the chairman.
Councilor Paxton moves, Councilor Shetty seconds. Any comments, questions? I have a couple. Uh, when I was reading this report, I gotta open it up here. Where are we here? When I was reading the administrative report, basically it says that as far as I know, everyone applies. So I looked up the act that references it and, uh, I'm just wondering, uh, there's a couple of things that he's supposed to be doing every year. I don't know if he does that. One of them is, uh, he's supposed to do an annual review of all the memberships and sign, uh, sign the bylaw enforcement that they all read it, they understood it. Then there is, uh, mutual aid meetings. And I think, um, the other thing I saw in there is that council is in charge of supervising discipline and removal of the chief executive officers. So it tells me that, um, we probably, it's more or less of an oversight position, I see, that that's who they report to, but I think, uh, we should see if we can do some, council agrees if we should meet with him once a year and see how things are going with him so that he's present, maybe when he, when he presents this report. And then we can ask him the questions that need to be done.
Have a minute at a committee, at a committee meeting just to go over.
Yeah. And it's, it, it says that there's a, the, uh, the fire department chief and the committee chair, this one, can look with them. So, um, it's, it's up to you how you want to do that. The, the other thing I'm just wondering is, is that, um, not to take away from the CEO, but I saw that he signed it. Maybe he, the fire chief should be signing it because it's referencing. I don't know if that's a, that needs to be done, or I don't know what your feelings are on that, Mr. CEO, but.
Uh, the, you, you mean the fire chief should be signing the report, you mean?
The, uh, the administrative report, thank you.
Administrative report, yeah. Um, well, typically, typically I, I review and sign the, uh, the report indicating that sort of I approve of the report moving forward to council.
Okay.
It, the, the report is written by him, it is from him to council.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, essentially I'm authorizing that sort of I approve the report and review the report. But, yeah. So that's sort of the procedure. It's, it's a formality if, if we wanted, you know, uh, another signature on it.
Well, I guess because what it says, uh, I'm trying to bring up this notice here. Uh, because what it says is that I, to my knowledge, so it tells you, if, if it's the, uh, fire chief that's doing it, uh, maybe there could be a, two separations. There's one that he signs it and then it comes off to you to make sure that you've approved it or you've seen it, or I'm not sure how.
Well, Dave doesn't approve it, we approve it.
Uh, yeah, but he approves it, brings it to council, he says. Because when, when I read the report, it says I approve it, and then I look at the signature and it's, and it's you that is the signature on the administrative report.
Yeah, it says, uh, it says, he, it's his recommendation to, his recommendation is for, um, the reappointment of all members of the, um, the fire department, is his recommendation.
Yes.
As, as the author of the report.
Yeah. Oh, what is council?
Is it crucial that he sign the report?
Uh, no, it's not, I'm just throwing out suggestions, but, uh, I, I think it is that he should come to us because, uh, according to the act, that's what he should be doing. Uh, the fire prevention act that we have. There are some duties in there that, as, for us as an oversight, is that we should be aware of what they are. And, uh, it is part of council's responsibility for the fire department.
Maybe we should have him in at one committee of the whole and ask him, does all that, the, the, the stuff that's listed out on the report, or if, in, in the act, does that happen during his training, Monday night training nights, they're probably going through all that stuff.
And that's.
But just to kind of give us an oversight of this is how we do it, or a one-time thing, just to kind of.
This is how I'm, this is how I'm fulfilling the requirements of the act, sort of, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the, the, the act is also saying that you, under review of all members, sign, and they need to sign it, that they sign it and understand it, so. I mean, if that's what he's doing, then that's what probably should be referenced in his adminis- in his administrative report then, to be specific on it. Because then it's a verification, because right now it's, I see it as that we're just making an assumption that it's, it's done.
What are we making an assumption on?
Uh, that it's done, because it says to my knowledge, and what's my knowledge, it doesn't say, I've verified the report, I've, I've verified it and we are sound with following.
So you want him to change wording?
Yeah, to be more precise, yes. To make it clearer.
Okay, well, maybe you can give him that suggestion, and you can give him the wording that you exactly want on that, and then you can put it in his next report.
I'm wondering if we should just table this report and get him to change it.
No.
No.
This is just an appointment of, of the fire department members.
Well, it's part of the act, he, he's quoting the act and it's part of the act.
He's quoting that he's in accordance with it.
Yes. To my knowledge, all members are in compliance of it. That's what he's saying, it doesn't mean that he knows that they are.
I think that the, uh, the report is fine, I think, I think what you're trying to say, if I hear what you're saying, is that you'd like an opportunity to, uh, confirm with the fire chief in attendance that, uh, that, uh, the portions of the act that you're concerned about are, have been met. And I agree with that, I think that's good, because I, I also, after you said your comment, I also would like to ask, uh, some infor- some more information about the act in terms of the performance appraisals and, and, you know, the logistics of how that works. So I think it'd be, just building on Counselor Bichetti's suggestion, I think we can table it, put it on to the committee of the whole for next month.
I would table it.
Or, or just move it, move it to the committee of the whole.
Well, no, I would okay this because you're appointing, but have him in for clarification at the next committee of the whole.
Yeah.
You know, with the questions we have from the act. And he'll probably clarify that, because they have Monday night training every night, so I'm sure they go through regularly all of this stuff.
I hear what you're saying, but the only, the only thing is, is that, then if you move it forward today, then you are making an assumption that everything is in compliance without asking a question.
So you don't want to reappoint the fire department?
No, no, I don't think anyone's, no one's saying that.
No fire department?
No one's saying that, they're just saying we're looking for, for an avenue to seek clarification. Um, I don't think this is time sensitive, there's nothing expiring, there's no membership expiration, I don't think there's an expiration.
Well, he has to annually appoint them, so he's annually doing that at the beginning of the year, as is required of him, so that's what he's doing.
Yeah, and if we need to ask for an extension, we can certainly do that. I was just giving some thoughts for consideration.
I'm not in favor of it.
I'm not in favor of it either.
We can pass it and then have him in here for clarification.
You can ask him to come in for clarification, but the resolution, I find.
Okay. Can I call for the vote, all in favor?
Oh, what's the motion, sir?
We already have a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Don't we have a motion? Yeah?
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carried. So we'll have him in for the next committee of the whole. Next is, uh, fifteen three, appointment of, uh, tax sale manager. Be resolved that the council of rural municipality of West Saint Paul, pursuant to bylaw and, uh, number twenty eleven dash oh one of rural municipality of West Saint Paul, appoint tax, tax service incorporated to, to conduct tax sales, uh, for the RM of West Saint Paul. And further, that pursuant to bylaw number twenty eleven dash oh one, the RM of Saint, West Saint Paul. I guess it must be, um, Donna's, I don't know how to say it, Dennis?
Thank you.
Thinking. Vice President of Tax Service be appointed tax sale manager for the RM of West Saint Paul. Could I have a mover, please?
So move it to the chairman.
Councilor Paxton moves, can I have a second or please?
I'll second.
Councilor Shetty seconds, any comments, questions?
I have a question for CEO.
Go ahead, Councilor Kleiber.
So, according to this, basically, the RM doesn't pay any fees. It's just a subcontract right out.
Correct.
And they take care of all the fees and recoup their fees.
All fees are recovered by, um, by, uh, folks that are, uh, behind on their, their payments.
What's alarming to me is the amount that is in arrears.
Yeah, it's, it's a material amount. So that's, that's the need to pursue.
Yeah. So they would get to work on this right away then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? So, if I understood right, so we're not paying anything for this service, or?
No, it is recovered, um, it's recovered from the, uh, the folks that are going through.
Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, any other comments, question? Nope. Can I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carried. Fifteen point five, be it resolved that the council of rural municipality of West Saint Paul schedule border revisions for twenty.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, right, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fifteen four, tax sale date, whereas section three six five of the municipality provides, the council must offer for sale by auction every property in municipality that has taxing arrears for designated year and year, and meet the criteria for sale by auction established by regulations. Whereas section three six five of the municipal act provides the council, it doesn't make immediate, immediately preceding year or any earlier as a year for which properties the taxes in respect of which are in arrears for the year must be offered for sale by auction to recover the tax arrears and costs. Now therefore be it resolved that the designated year for which properties in arrear be offered for sale by auction be twenty twenty-three, meaning all properties without timing taxes for the year twenty twenty-two or prior. Further be it resolved that in accordance with section three six three, the municipal act costs shall be the actual cost incurred for each parcel listed for the twenty twenty-three tax sale plus administration's fees of fifty dollars as set forth for the Manitoba regis- uh, regulations fifty dash ninety-seven. Be it further resolved that taxable sale be held October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at two P M. Can I have a mover, please?
I'll move.
Councilor Shetty moves, can I have a second or please? Councilor Shetty, uh, Paxton seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carried. Border revision, be it resolved that the rural municipality of fifteen five, border revisions. Be it resolved that the council of rural municipality of West Saint Paul schedule border revisions for twenty twenty-five, realty business personnel, property rolls, and added taxes for Wednesday, November sixth, twenty twenty-four at five P M. Could I have a mover, please?
So move it to the chairman.
Uh, Councilor Bich, uh, uh, Paxton moves, Councilor Kleiber seconds it. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, can I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fifteen point six, Manitoba Good Roads. Be it resolved that the council of rural municipality of West Saint Paul renew its membership with Manitoba Good Roads Association for the year twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved, council prove payment of twenty twenty-four MG, uh, MGRA membership fee for two hundred and fifty dollars. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move.
Councilor Shetty moves, can I second her, please? Anyone want to second? None?
I just know why we're members of this.
Can we second it first, please? You want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilor Pax, uh, Paxton can't seconds it. Any comments, questions?
Why are we members of this?
That's a good question. Is this something that we should be members of?
Yeah, this, this is, uh, this is sort of a historic member, or a historic type of membership that we've had for a number of years now. Really, it's, uh, you know, it does offer public works employee training program that, uh, we don't take, uh, very much advantage of in general. In the past, I think, I think there has been representation on, on the board from council members here, so there has been interest in participating in the past. And the membership has continued in the past. Other than training, it, you know, it does provide recognition to cities and towns and, and sort of, uh, throughout Manitoba that, that have done good work, um, and terms of beautification and maintenance programs and so forth, so, um, I think it's a good opportunity to bring it forward to council and, and, uh, discuss, discuss, uh, sort of the merit of the membership.
I think we were on the board a couple of years ago, if I don't remember, if I remember correctly.
Not on my term, but maybe your term. Who's, who's our liaison for this?
I don't know if anybody is.
No, there's no one on the board now. Stan, uh, Councilor, formerly Councilor Parag used to sit on that.
Yeah, and it's basically, from what I've seen, it's, who's got the best yard, right?
No, they do good road, they, they, they'll have, they'll promote the good roads, the gravel roads, ash-malted roads, then yards and municipal sites.
You know, who's got the best farmyard, who's got the best residential yard? That's kind of what, the only thing we've got from it. So I don't know what council wants to do with this, but you don't seem to be very active in it.
No. No, it's, it's not a large sum, um, it, it is a goodwill gesture and it does connect us with sort of the larger community to some extent, but admittedly, we currently don't get a lot of value from it.
Any other discussions? None? Can I call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye, I guess.
Any opposed?
No.
It's, uh, carried. Okay, now it's fifteen seven, uh, Solana surplus biotax received for information. Uh, does anyone have any questions on this?
Just a comment, I guess it's good that it went up to a smaller community that it can still be used and, uh, and it's good that it met our reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got over the asking price, which is nice.
It is.
Looks like they had a little bit of a bidding war there.
Yeah, I think things usually pick up sort of in the last four or five hours.
Yeah.
Before things close.
Fourteen bids?
Fourteen bids, yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty good. Well, it was in pretty good shape.
Yeah, it was.
Those guys have taken care of their equipment quite well.
Okay, uh, so next we move on to, uh, number eighteen, question period. Does anyone have any questions? Last names, Councilor.
Eleanor Link, ten forty-five, Toshack Road, I have some quick questions.
Okay.
Uh, for the payment register, check number four six zero four nine, Franco Posta, postalia mailing postage is for mailing what? Is that part of the newspaper cost, or newsletter cost?
What was the number again, Miss Link?
Uh, four six zero four nine for three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Franco type postalia, let me see that. Is that your postage machine? Yeah, okay. So that's what that is, they load the postage machine for the year, or however long.
Sorry?
They load the postage machine? So you have like a postage machine, they load up the postage machine?
Oh, I see, okay.
And then, and then as they send letters out, they use the postage machine for that?
Okay. Thank you. And the second question, um, regarding the discussion of, um, the costs for the newsletter when you were discussing the payment register item ten. To my recollection, I think council has a contract which was tendered, um, with, uh, the RM has a contract with Donna Maxwell and I think with Sandra Barnes. Um, the former council voted on that contract and I believe it was for more than a year, maybe three years, maybe five, I can't remember.
Okay.
I do believe that there is a contract.
That's right, you're right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Come forward, please.
Laura Albert, three twelve, Evelyn Avenue, um, also one quick one on the premier printing check. There is in brackets a number thirty-seven hundred, is that the number of newsletters that will print it?
Yes, I guess so, yes. Yes, no.
And so, does it go to each household in the RM?
It goes through.
It goes through postal codes, so it would go through postal codes of West Saint Paul.
So it would hit all the businesses and the households, or just the households?
Uh, not businesses.
Not businesses, it's just households.
So just households? Yeah.
Okay. Um, so if I take the, um, uh, the numbers with the fire department and going back, I went back, uh, six years, and generally, except for one, uh, little blip that happened during COVID, they run with thirty-three or thirty-four members. And this year they're appointing thirty. During that time, of course, our households have increased, we're up, um, approximately sixty to seventy percent. And at this rate, I would say that it's very likely that by the twenty twenty-six census, within the single census period, the five-year period, we will have doubled the number of our households. That also increases the amount of traffic for sure that's in the area, and that's also a responsibility as first responders for the fire department. So my question is, when have we reviewed the status of our fire protection and first responder protection? And how do we compare with other jurisdictions? And having listened to your earlier discussion, perhaps that can be something that can be looked at when the fire chief is here at the C O W meeting?
I think, uh, I think last year, we, we actually had the vote to allow them to get up to thirty-four members. Does anybody remember that? And then they've had, uh, they, they definitely did, because we had the vote to, they were surpassing the number that we had usually allowed them to be at. And then we've had, uh, like, I think at Christmas time, they had three or four guys retire, like long-term retirees and stuff like that. So I'm sure they'll be coming to us again and doing their hiring bits again, so.
They, they usually do it during their open house where they have a table set up for the, the recruitment. But yeah, we can find out more information.
Yeah, I think, I think all of that needs to be reviewed because again, since twenty nineteen, there were thirty-three or thirty-four. And now we're down to the thirty, perhaps the thirty is a number that council had had, but as we have doubled out the size of the municipality and the responsibility for them, the number needs to be looked at as to whether or not we adequately service for our first responder.
I, 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 I have had discussions with the chief and he's indicated his intent of, uh, recruiting to thirty-five members this year.
Yeah, and, and that, that won't do a huge difference. Our ratio of the members to our households has more than doubled since twenty seventeen. So we're really behind because the RM grew so quickly. So again, I think it's a, something that you really need to dig into the numbers and look and see where we want to be so that they're able to actually provide the service without being stressed and starting to call in, uh.
I know that the, the chief, when he's buying equipment, is buying equipment. I know that the, the chief, when he's buying equipment, is buying equipment, keeping in mind the density now. So we've had to pay a little bit more for some of the equipment that we purchased so that he can make the round, he can make the turns, that kind of thing. So I think they're keeping that in mind for sure, but volunteers are volunteers, so.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate, you know, we're increasing our population and apparently we're not getting the volunteers.
Yeah, I think he'll, he's pretty on top of that.
Yeah.
Or it's the chief that's thinking in the future and keeping us stopped, I want to say stopped higher, but just because we're on call, just to make sure he might, his numbers might be high for what we already have. We don't know that.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the fires, the least part of their first responder U B S, they, they certainly do huge amounts with motor vehicle and that, that's going to increase for them as well.
Yeah.
And I believe that when he was recently in, he said that they had also changed the status of this ambulance station so that it used to be an automatic restaffing if the ambulance was called out and they had changed the status so it's not automatic. So there may be times now when the ambulance station also is not staffed. That all puts stress on them.
Well, there's also issues with the whole certification and I think they're working on that too now, right? They want, they're demanding more requirements and so forth, so.
Yep, just so we can stay on top of it and help the Fire Department as, as they need it.
For sure.
I guess the other quick comment is on the in-camera item about the L I D that was defeated. I guess I'm a little confused about that because my understanding was that if that, that first reading was defeated and the L I D was done, that it was a number of years before anything could come forward. So what could be in camera now? It's not.
Well, we can't discuss that with you yet, can we? We don't even know. It's on the agenda and we have to discuss it, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think we know what's.
I mean, I, I think an R M, if it came a hundred percent with its money, then it's nobody's business what you do with your money, but that half of that money was there, so. All right, well then I look forward to maybe hearing something from the in-camera.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? None? Okay, so next on the agenda is that we're going in camera.
Did you?
Be it resolved.
Yeah, but they're expected for seven o'clock.
Yeah, but there's other in-camera items we can discuss, right?
Yeah.
So we can carry on with that, right? Florence?
Thank you.
Keep, be it resolved that in accordance with section one fifty-two of the municipal act, council does now move in camera to discuss the enforcement of the act of bylaws on matters that are in preliminary stages respecting which discussion in public prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out its activities and negotiations. And be it further resolved that in accordance with section eight of three, one D of the municipal act, any issues that are discussed, I kept confidential until discussed by the regular council. Could I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councilor, Pat Cadd moves. Councilor Cliver seconds it. Any other comments, questions? Can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. So we've come out of camera, we have a resolution to read on the contravention, order of remedy for contravention. I'm going to ask our M L, M L O to read the resolution, if you could, please.
Thank you. Whereas in accordance with the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul General Enforcement Bylaw twenty twenty-one dash twelve, the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul has issued an order to remedy to the registered owner of C T number three one four four zero seven four dated January fourth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the registered owner has submitted a notice of objection to the Rural Municipality dated January third, twenty twenty-four, and whereas the appellant has failed to appear at the hearing, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul dismiss the appeal.
Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Buscetti moves. Can I have a second or please? Councilor Cliver seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. The next on the agenda is we had a discussion on the wastewater collection system and we will be now returning the meeting at eight oh, sorry.
Nineteen point three point two, Mr. Mayor?
Nineteen.
Resident information request?
Oh, okay, right. Oh, yes, resident, oh, as the rising report, yeah, we had discussed also resident information request, those two topics. Thank you very much. So now we'll adjourn the meeting. It is eight oh five on Thursday. Be it resolved that this meeting of council stand adjourned at eight oh five P M. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Cliver moves. Can I have a second or please? Councilor Buscetti seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, carried.